Welcome, everyone. I will call the Wilmington School Committee meeting of August 30th, 2017, to order. Tristan, please note that everyone is present. And if you would, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome back, everyone. Brand-new academic year got started a couple of days ago. All right. Let us start off with the approval of minutes, June 28th, 2017, regular session minutes. Do I have a motion? Manny, second. Jen, all those in favor?
Can I just ask?
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot to ask for discussion.
I was not there, so I'm going to abstain from voting on the minutes. But I do have a couple of points that I wanted to make. It's not about how the minutes were taken. I believe those were taken accurately. It was about how things were discussed. So I can hold off on those until we get to that part of our agenda, because I believe we're talking about the superintendent's search tonight. Okay, should I hold off?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, great.
So any further discussion? All right. All those in favor? All right, six in favor, one abstention, being Julie. All right. We seek approval of a donation of a Cuba scam from Analog Devices at the value to the WHS Science Department with a value of approximately $8,000. Certainly appreciate that. And by policy, a school committee has to vote on accepting any donation valued at more than $500. Do I have a motion from Peggy, or do you have a question?
I have a question. Do we have some, is that, it looked interesting. Do we have somebody who can do it, who knows how to do it? Or are they going to help somebody here learn how to do it? I don't know if it needs help or not.
Yeah, my understanding, it's a machine. It's used for taking pitches, measuring weights and dimensions. And I spoke with Chris Phillips and Linda Pete, and they'll be using the forensic classes. So I believe they have some idea how to use it. If not, there's a simple copy analog if they run into any issues.
Thank you. Okay, and then I'll make the motion.
Very good. Thank you. And MJ with a second?
No.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you, Analog Devices. All right. We are also being asked to approve the disposal of a laminator machine from the Woburn Street School. This is a machine that was purchased more than 10 years ago, has ceased working, and to renew the service plan actually would be a higher cost than actually the value of the machine itself. So the Woburn Street School is asking us to allow them to dispose it as per policy. Do I have any motion to do so? From MJ? Julie?
I have a question.
Yes.
What is the cost to dispose of it? Is there a cost?
It's a great question, actually. I was going to ask the same thing. How is a machine like that disposed of?
We, in our technology department, we have a company that'll come and take the spare parts or what have you. So we'll go the same route as that and see. But if there is a cost, it'll be minimal.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor? Did I, I saw, I saw the motion, right? Yeah, and second. Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous? Now we're going to approve warrants. I'll seek a nomination to approve warrants G423, G400, G401, G402, G403, R228, R200, L40, L02, L03, L04, L05, FS29, FS30, FS31, FS03. Do I have a motion? Tom, the second. Julie, all those in favor? That is unanimous. All right. I seek a motion to approve payroll warrants, 621, 17, 705, 17, 719, 17, 82, 17, 816, 17, 830, 17. Do I have a motion? MJ? Jen, all those in favor? That's six in favor, one abstention, being Peggy. All right, warrants CB13, do I have a motion? Peggy, second by Tom, all those in favor? That's five in favor with two abstentions, Steve and MJ. Warrants CF1604, do I have a motion? Julie, the second from Peggy, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Warrants sped 29, sped 30, sped 31, sped 32, sped 33, sped 34, sped 01, sped 02. Apparently, we go up to 34 and start over. Do I have a motion? From Manny, from Tom, the second from Tom, all those in favor? That's five in favor, two abstentions, being MJ and Steve. All right, that concludes our consent calendar. And we'll move on to superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. First item under the superintendent's report is the personnel report. In your package, you have the personnel report as of a few days ago. We're in pretty good shape as far as hiring goes. You'll notice that it's much smaller list than we looked at last year at this time. I do have Director of Human Resources, Ken Stalazie, here if you have any questions on that.
Yes, Julie.
I was just curious, what positions are still open that are really a priority? You know, we need to get coverage for them.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Hello.
So we did hire six, we did fill six positions since that report was generated. In terms of what still remains, we have the interim Director of Administration and Finance, which I understand is on the agenda a little bit later for appointment. We have a full-year, long-term substitute technology education teacher at the middle school that Mr. Welch is actively trying to fill. That remains open as of today.
Excuse me, that is Kevin's position, and because he, as the interim, has the right to go back if he so chooses, we're putting a long-term sub in that position.
So I remember when we talked about that position last month, and there were some candidates, or there were some people that we thought might be taking that position. Is that?
We had two positions in the tech ed department, Kevin's and another one person that left. So we filled that one.
Okay.
So we still have the long-term.
So there's still one open tech?
Right. Kevin's in the process of filling that.
So what happens if we, Kevin will?
Well, we'll, to use the day-to-day sub, we have someone in there already. We just want to get one, someone for the rest of the year.
Okay. Thanks.
The other teaching position that we still have available, open, is the elementary STEM leader, which is the new position being added in the teachers' unit. Sean Gallagher is actively recruiting for that position, and that is still open as of In addition to that, we have four educational assistant positions that are open. One of them should be filled by Friday. I have an appointment with a new hire coming in on Friday. But we have three other ones that are still open, and we have a general education tutor position at the Woburn Street School that is open. The gentleman that was in that role actually became an educational assistant, so the general tutor position became available as a result of that transfer. And the only other position we have open is a security monitor at the middle school. The person that was in that role actually became administrative, I'm sorry, an educational assistant at a different school, and so that position is open. That's the security monitor at the middle school. And actually, last week, there is one more. We have a food service worker position that's open at the Wildwood School.
So we're actually in pretty good shape. As a matter of fact, one of the ed assistant positions just opened today. So sometimes these things happen as the school year begins, so. But we do have substitutes in these positions, so they are covered.
And the security monitor at the middle school, that is covered?
Yes.
Okay, and we're covering it with a sub?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm not sure. We do have Officer Fiori is there, and there was never a security monitor, well, only recently have we put a security monitor at the middle school. So as I said, Officer Fiori is right there, as well as right in front of the front office. So I'm not sure if they've, I haven't got over there yet to, just wait to see who's manning that, but I think that they should be fine.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I know it's me. I'm over the summer, but I can't hear you, Paul. Officer Fiori, he's not, that's not his job that we're talking about?
No, I'm just saying, he's the school resource officer. He is located in the middle school.
And where did we have the security position? We're talking about the lady at the front door?
Exactly.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sorry.
I didn't realize that was her name. Yeah. And I'd just like to add, this is very interesting, in some paperwork that's come through this week, they were saying that only 6.7% of STEM positions are held by women. So we could be encouraging our seniors, there is a job, even Proust tonight, we're trying to find somebody, and it would be really interesting for them to know the seniors is someplace you could look, you might like to go to.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Again, welcome back to students and families to a new school year. Leading up to the school year, we were quite busy. During the month of August, we had a school readiness meeting, which the leadership team, along with members of the police, Wilmington Police, Wilmington Fire, Department of Public Works, Department of Public Buildings, get together and just talk about the status of schools, the roadways, and so forth. So we had that meeting in the middle of August. Following that meeting, we had a leadership retreat where we met with the leadership team and just talked about getting ready for the opening of the schools. That week, which is again, middle of August, we also had a data institute. We've had this for the past few years, and principals, administrators, curriculum team leaders get together, led by Jen White, who's our data analyst. We sit down, go over MCAS results and various different data points, and we start to work on goals for the coming school year. So that went off for two days, the week of August 14th. So that went very, very well. We did have a technology camp. Julie Kelly ran it in the month of, for a week, August 14th to 18th at the high school. We had new teacher orientation, August 24th and 25th. Assistant Superintendent Gallagher and Christine McMooneum ran that. Very, very successful. It was a day and a half where we indoctrinated the new teachers, if you will, and gave them a tour of Wilmington, and then let them go to their classrooms at the end of the, toward the end of that Friday. First day for staff was this past Monday. We had a meeting in the auditorium. It seemed to be well-attended and represented. It was a good meeting, probably a little shorter than it has been in the past, but I think that got some thank yous on that. And then our first day for students was yesterday. And I visited a few schools today, and I've heard nothing but positive things. That it seemed the first couple of days, or first day and a half while I was there, had gone pretty well. So we're back in the swing of things. We go to school again tomorrow, and then there's no school on Friday and Monday, so the nice four-day weekend. So it's nice the way we do it. Kids come back for three days, the next week is four days, and then it's five days. So it's a nice way of easing in. I would like to thank Public Buildings for the cleanliness of the schools. They did a tremendous job. Did a lot of work at all the schools. Put a new roof at the Boutwell, new roof at the north. They did a lighting project at the north, and if you have a chance to go over there, it's amazing. It's such a difference, and staff really likes it. Just brightens up the whole school and, you know, the normal maintenance at the other schools. Department of Public Works also did a lot of work, again, a lot of it was at the north. If you drive by there, they redid the front driveway, if you will, added some grass and some sod, did some other work in the area. Looks really, really nice. They did some line painting and various other painting at some of the schoolyards, other normal maintenance, and kind of works with us as that the state was doing a, I think, a sewer project near the north as well. So they've been working with us in that. So it's been really, really, really great. And then the administrators and central office staff, for all they do to get ready for the beginning of the new school year, there's a, believe it or not, the summer's sometimes busier than the school year for administrators, and especially central office, trying to get ready for the next school year. I would like to, it's back-to-school report, but in this, the town of Wilmington, Wilmington Public Schools, I had been talking with Jeff Hall toward the end of last school year during the summer, and as the Massachusetts Municipal Association has a contest for eighth graders and third graders, so just like to read a little paragraph. "The town of Wilmington and Wilmington Public Schools were recently chosen by the Massachusetts Municipal Association as one of over 100 communities to participate in its annual statewide contest for third and eighth grade students attending public schools. The eighth graders will participate in essay contests designed to raise public awareness and promote the qualities of good local government. Third graders will participate in a poster contest to encourage future Massachusetts leaders to take an active interest in their community's activities." So we're starting to get some of that information. The Woburn Street Shawsheen for third graders in the middle school will be participating. I think we'll be sending out a joint press release with the town in the next week or so. So I thought that was, that's pretty nice, so. Okay, that's my back-to-school report.
Can I ask one question? Slightly off-topic, but not really. Do we, will we be having a student representative join us at our meetings in the near future?
Yeah, we should. Yeah, Linda will find someone.
Okay. I just didn't know if that was in the, if it was done yet or not. Okay, great.
School just started, so she's got to find one.
Oh, I, that's true. I'm sorry. Sorry.
Paul, could I ask for the data person? Is that a full-time job, or is it still part-time job?
It's still part-time. Yes.
And then, I've never been able to wrap my head around that position exactly. So could maybe in October, at the end of October, maybe after two months, we could have a little report on what it is exactly that position covers?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Julie?
Mr. Gergio, do you have any idea when the state is going to be finishing their water main sewer project around by the north? It's kind of, I drove through there last night, there's water going all over the place. There's big divots you have to cross. Just curious if we know.
Sometime in the fall, but when the state's running it, we really don't have much control. I think one of the things, Department of Public Works tried to work with them to get it around the bend anyway, so it doesn't impact or impacts the least the driveway back there.
The driveway of the school.
Yeah, I think the last I heard, I think Jamie McGoldy and Mike Woods had said sometime in the fall, but that comes with a caveat.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else from members? All right, we'll move on.
We have Assistant Superintendent Gallagher put us a summer professional development report together, and you can answer any questions that you may have.
Well, first of all, I just want to echo Superintendent Gergio's comments and just, you know, a great opening of school. And I really was in all the buildings the last, I say, few days here, but I want to thank all the principals for all the work that they did in getting their buildings ready, but also thank the teachers, which is kind of a unique aspect that Wilmington does, where families can go and tour the classrooms the day before school starts, which I think was pretty neat. And the teachers really did a nice job organizing the rooms, and same with the custodial staff. The floors are so clean, I thought I'd take my shoes off when I was going into the buildings. But the, it was just, I think the last couple of days, it's kind of what it's all about, and just the enthusiasm of the new school year, I think, is pretty awesome. So I just want to thank all the people that were instrumental in, as Mr. Gergio said, getting the schools up and running. We were really excited this summer. As you can see, there was a lot of PD offerings, professional development offerings, in various areas. Continued with the curriculum work that we've been doing from, you know, K to 12. We had a lot of staff working on curriculum, leaders workshop, the social-emotional learning initiatives continued throughout the summer. We really focused on offering various professional developments in the realm of technology. And you can see the different aspects that we offered, from our tech integration specialists, offering a lot of Google Classroom apps. We also brought in our content teachers. As you can see, there's English, math teachers, science teachers, various grades and grade levels. And what was really neat is bringing some Beverly teachers to Wilmington, where the Wilmington staff and the Beverly staff really collaborated. And I really believe that networking is going to be instrumental as we move forward. You know, the, you know, I always felt, in my experience with professional development, when teachers can teach teachers, it's invaluable, because they know what works in the classroom, you know, where, what areas you need to focus on. So when I was working with the staff this summer, going into that professional development, it was, that was an aspect that you, I think, really flourished with the Wilmington and the Beverly teachers, you know, there. So from those many workshops throughout the summer, they've been collaborating on different aspects of the curriculum. So the goal for us was to offer a lot of this professional development in the summer, and I knew summertime is tough for a lot of, a lot of people. Remember, Wilmington does a great job at offering summer programs to continue the learning for a lot of our students over the summer. So some of the teachers that would have, I believe, taken some of this professional development were actually servicing our students. So I think there was, there were some of the workshops that we didn't run, but we, the teachers have prepped for, that we're going to run during the Wilmington University. And we have a meeting, I have a meeting with Professional Development Committee and co-chair Lisa Federici on Wednesday, that we're going to compile a lot of this, I think, these courses, and offer it in the Wilmington University after school, and really promote that program once again, where teachers are doing a lot of great work after school. So the other big piece that I think is really important for us is taking a look at our professional development throughout the year, our CIT days, and really structuring those, working with the CTLs and also the principals, but to really also have that professional development continue throughout the year in a lot of, during that time, too. So that's kind of what we did over the summer. You can see we offered various, especially with technology, various levels of people that are just beginning, kind of intermediate and advanced, for teachers to really, you know, enhance the 21st century learning. So I'm excited for another year, and really wrapping my, you know, head around the professional development, but also, last year was valuable, developing partnerships with our teachers and principals, and then really just organizing for the rest of the year, and work with our teachers and give them the skills that will help enhance what they're already doing, the great things they're already doing. So there you go.
MJ?
I had a question. And throughout, I think, well, I think professional development and any resource that we can offer our teachers to better their own skills, as well as advance their own knowledge, I think is huge. My question to you is, have you thought about or discussed, I don't know if this was practiced in the past, but doing sort of like a district-wide newsletter, whether it be monthly, quarterly, however, just offering some of those classes, you know, workshops in other areas of the colleges, that they can work towards their, the credits they have to, you know, keep towards their licensure? Is that something that you, that you have on your hot plate?
Yeah.
To kind of, just so that they can go seek it out and put, you know, and apply for, for, I just wanted to know. I think sending those resources out kind of helps support that learning process, as well as what's on their plates as teachers and what they have to drive. Anything that we can do to support that in order, you know, to put it in their hands, I think would be hugely beneficial.
Yes, so a lot of the professional development opportunities that come in to our district, we send out to the entire faculty.
Okay.
A lot of that, the Salem State information that you receive, that's just a sample, but those come in monthly, and then we send those out to staff, because that also gives opportunities for teachers. You know, a lot, you know, a lot of teachers, you know, have young families, and they don't have time, you know, after school. And this is just working with teachers throughout my career, but also talking with our Professional Development Committee, and really understanding, like, the more we offer, the better. So if we're just offering after school, for example, there are some teachers that could not take advantage of that because of, you know, young families and commitments. So a lot of those, some of those courses that we offer also offered on Saturdays, like a nine-to-one on a Saturday, which might be more beneficial. So the other piece that I really think's important is working with the CTLs, the principals, and the teachers, is during that CIT time, to really assist with some quality professional development during that time, too. And that's kind of like one of the goals that I have for this year, especially for grades eight, nine, and 10 teachers, supporting Chromebook Initiative. I think that's really important.
I think it's important to bridge that, especially with a higher institution such as Salem, but as well as Merrimack.
Yeah.
And I think there's a lot, and correct me if I'm wrong, there may be resources where this, that these can be done online as well, opportunities. And I think there's more of those type of things coming out, because everybody is in that work mode. But I also don't want to limit their, the surrounding districts that we have had previous relationships with, cross advertising workshops that they have, too. I think that's been beneficial, and it's been financially feasible to join into this, too. It's less of a financial impact for all involved. So that's something, too, that I'm hoping, you know, as you gear up towards these things, that we can also look into as well. You know, that type of diversity.
Absolutely.
Great.
A few years ago, we had started going through the whole school system, and for instance, the phys ed group would meet for a whole year, and they'd review their curriculum and give new ideas and everything. And I think we left off before we got to the IT people. And I'm just wondering, apart from the middle school, do we have specific IT courses in the high school? Because I'm not sure, has the curriculum changed in all these years? The kids are so far surpassing people, and I just get the feeling sometimes that from what I hear that they're doing in the classroom, that it's way below what they're actually doing outside of school. And that we have some really, really bright kids as far as knowing how to use computers and what to do. And I'm not sure if we did get to review the IT. Well, first of all, I'll ask, are there special courses in the high school that are taught by IT people?
Yes. So you have Julie Kelly in tech integration. They do a lot of the work with the students. But I think what's, the transition is, and we experienced this as we developed our one-to-one laptop initiative, is it's utilizing technology to really enhance what the teachers are already doing. So technology's not going to replace great teaching. There's still great teaching. But the, what's, what needs to happen, especially grades eight, nine, and 10, and as the technology's being utilized by students, there, there is, exactly what you said, there's going to be that catch-up period, where we need to work with our teachers to have them utilize, you know, technology as a tool to enhance what they're doing in the curriculum. So there is going to be that, you know, learning curve. And you're right, this generation, they're the digital learner generation. And as we said before, the biggest market today is age two for technology. That's the, one of the biggest markets. So you're having So you're having students coming in now at the kindergarten level, that this is part of their life. And I think that working with the faculty and providing professional development is essential, because I, I really believe it's, it's just going to take time. Not like 10 years from now, but a few years, where the teachers are starting to really bring the technology within the curriculum, where, you know, the student, I have to admit, though, even some of our best tech teachers, the students are always a little bit ahead, you know, and I did a lot of work in this area, but, you know, it, it's the only, if you look at the advancements of technology, or advancements, you know, of, from cars to, to all these great things that happened for all the generations, the last hundred years, this technology, usually the adults would have time to work with a new innovation, and then we could teach our children how to do it. What's happening with the, the technology today is it's, it's coming out fast and furious, where it's one of the first, you know, inventions in society, that adults and students, there's no time for the adults to learn it to teach our students. So for parents and teachers, it's, technology's a revolution that we have to continue to catch up on.
Well, and I think that, if, I'm not sure if it can be combined, but I think it can. The WCTV programs that they ran this summer, the summer camps that they had.
Oh.
Were so terrific.
Exactly.
And the kids had a great time, and they just, when, when you see what they learned, you're like, wow, in one week? But somehow, I would love to see if we could combine them with the schools.
Mm-hmm. Like, right, like, internship within the school.
Yes. I don't think we've put enough effort right now, at this point, into the technology. And I think we've got to find ways to, to do that.
Exactly. And I think that's one of my goals this year, is, is to really kind of develop a structured professional development plan, that, you know, obviously, we want teachers outside of the school hours to, you know, to enhance the learning, but there's, there's a lot of issues with some families, that you have family commitments, but I think it's, if we have that time during the school day, that we can develop some professional development, so everybody is getting some sort of training. I think that's one of our goals this year, especially with the CIT time. But it's, it's, it's an exciting time, you know, as we move forward with 21st century learning, it, it really is.
Well, you probably remember, I left, I wasn't so excited, but I'm back. I'm back, and I'm very excited. And I think we do have to put some emphasis on the technology.
Sure.
MJ, follow?
No one else had a question? I, I did. That, Peggy raises a good question, especially in light of the conversation and the, and the response. We did have curriculum renewal cycle, which each year, they took a specific department and renewed, and did the, and worked on the curriculum. And in light of, technology is a tool. It's not the, it's not.
Correct.
What teaches our students, but it is a tool of which to enhance teaching, and to aid teaching. And I think, however, we need to offer professional development, whether it be online, whether it be during school, which I think is going to run into a lot of issues. Time Y CIT days would probably be the only option. But we, we need to find creative and diverse ways, I think is what I was trying to say earlier, to, to allow our staff to access it, and access it successfully. And I think it all ties into that curriculum renewal cycle. And in, and in bringing that up, I wanted to know where we are in that curriculum renewal cycle? If it has stalled, I'm hoping we're, we're starting it and focusing in it on it this year? And if so, what exactly, where are we in that cycle?
So if you recall, for grade six to 12.
Yeah.
We've been working on curriculum mapping, within all the departments. Stage one, remember, we, we had this, the conversation last year. The goal was for all the content areas to complete stage one curriculum mapping. This year, we have some departments that finished the stage one, which is the standards, the essential questions. Now we're moving into stage two, which is the, the assessment piece, developing the formative and summative assessments to measure learning. So, and that's where a lot of this technology can assist and enhance, especially that, the assessments and the online learning piece. So where, I think we're in pretty good shape, sixth to 12, some departments a little bit ahead of others. Then our specialists, and remember, your ELA, your math curriculum at the elementary level has already been almost completed. But now your specialists, your music, your physical education, business at the high school level, art, they're continuing to work on there. They're gonna, their goal would be stage one curriculum mapping to tie in, so.
Okay. Can you kind of clarify for me only, because I think I'm a little, certainly not that familiar, is that with the curriculum mapping, curriculum is ever-changing.
Correct.
So I'm, I'm wondering, how is that mapping piece keeping up with those changes, so that as we go through this process, we can still stay in front or stay, you know, ahead of the game, or with the game, I should say, in, in, in how curriculum is developing, and what our students need to know, and what we need to test them on?
Right. So when you, when you're looking at especially the formative and summative assessments, how are you going to assess learning? That's where you, when you develop your standards of what you're going to be teaching in that unit, the key standards, the essential standards, what's important to know. Your formative and your summative assessments, that's where you're creative. So it may not just be like the old days, when, when we took our assessment or unit test, it might be pencil, paper, you know, low-level, true, false, multiple choice, short answer. Today, what's happening, especially like with flipped classroom and some of the technology strategies, the students have the ability to create and to show their learning in various ways. And I think that that's, when you're looking at 21st century learning, that's, it's like the key phrase, but it's really tying in to what students are going to need to be successful in college and career, right? And so for us, as we're, I think, stage one, when you develop a curriculum, that's kind of like the easy piece of it. But stage two is really, how are you going to measure those standards? And the key is, is various way with high-order thinking. So it could be a project, it could be, you know, a, a, a problem solving, like within the community, utilizing the knowledge that they had. So I think it, that's the key. And I think the challenge, when you look at 21st century learning, that the biggest challenge is allowing students to take leadership, right? 21st century skill in the classroom, allowing students to problem solve and be innovators, allowing students to truly collaborate as they solve those problems. So when you look at those skill sets with teachers, when they collaborate, and they say, okay, how do we tie in these 21st century learning skills to this assessment? And you're not always going to get that assessment, really, on, you know, pencil, paper. It's really, can we take this? Can we make this, these standards a project, and how we're going to measure that, you know, with a rubric and, and all? See, that's, to me, that's the exciting piece of kind of working with teachers. And, and they start to just let the students run, run with it, you know? It's like the old days, when, when we were in school, the teacher would say, tell us what you learned, or tell us what you know. The difference today is, show us what you learned, show us what you know. And they give the students opportunities to be creative and to show the learning, so.
Thank you very much.
All right. I get fired up, so.
That's good. We like that.
Mr. Gallagher, on your cover sheet to us, you referenced the Safety Care Program Training this month for staff.
Correct.
And we, we have a lot of program names, there's a lot of different options. What's Safety Care?
Safety Care is a program, it's like de-escalating, if a student is misbehaving. It gives teachers strategies on how to de-escalate, to the point where you can get the student to refocus. In some cases, students, especially in some of our special education settings, or even at, you know, at the middle school, when a student becomes a socio-emotional learning student, actually may become aggressive, or it becomes a scenario where they may hurt themselves or others. The Safety Care, it's a de-escalation, but sometimes the staff will have to, you know, protect the student by restraining.
So is this something that would be used in conjunction with some of the other programs?
Yeah, it all ties into like the PBIS, Responsive Classroom, Second Step. It, it really works with teachers on using different strategies, and really recognizing the social-emotional learning, in the sense of if a student is struggling or is getting frustrated, it gives the teacher strategies to help them get refocused. So the Safety Care is run by Adam, and he ended up training, I want to say about 20 teachers, and we're going to continue that training, but it does tie in to the, the PBIS and, and kind of that whole social-emotional piece.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes, Jen?
It was exciting to see all of the offerings this summer, really great.
Thank you.
I'm wondering, what is the focus and goal for PD for the, for this academic year? Going to follow the summer offerings?
Yes.
Is that the plan? So it'll be the reading workshop, the math, the science?
Correct.
Okay. And there's a plan for that?
Yeah, and I think that, you know, for, when I, for us, looking at, you know, having last year as experience has been great, because coming in to this year, I can, we can work together and, and kind of tweak things. But yeah, I think that CIT time, in that Professional Development Day, we can, I think, work with the principals and the CTLs and the teachers to really, you know, we also did a lot of surveys and getting, you know, with the PD committee, getting input back, like, this is what we would like, this is what we'd like to focus on. So we're taking that information from the teachers, and really going to craft, I think, a plan for this year on, on what we want to accomplish.
Ask a follow-up?
Yes.
Steve, can I ask a follow-up?
Of course.
And so at the end of each, at the end of the PD sessions, or do they do evaluations or exit tickets, those sorts of things? Do we have, can we have access to some of that, just to see?
Ah, yeah. I mean, we did, yeah. We did, yes. I'm trying, I'm just remembering, the CIT days, we did multiple surveys, and then we also, one of the big focuses, if, if you recall, is SEI training for ELL. So we did a survey at the end of the year regarding SEI and ELL training, which is kind of the state mandated. And Paul Roggerio, Superintendent Paul Roggerio, and at the time, Joanne Benton, worked with Sue McDonald. And one of the big offerings this fall through that teacher survey is, we're going to be offering the SEI course for Wilmington teachers, but we also open it up to, for teachers on the outside that need that certification. So that's, that was one, from that survey, that was one aspect that we got from the teachers, and we work with Sue McDonald. But yeah, I can show you, yeah, the survey from, I think it was our last two CIT days, and then also the PD survey we sent out in June.
And then I have one more follow-up, just one more. Can I ask one more follow-up?
You have a question?
And then we talked, and MJ made, is that really good comments about offering this, finding other ways to share some of this work? And so I was just wondering if teach, I'm sure they are, but teachers encouraged to share this with their, their teams and their grade level when they do co-planning, and sort of saying, hey, I went to this workshop. Is there, I guess, do you oversee any of that?
Yes.
To see sort of how is this coming?
That's part of, of the contract. So if teachers go out and do professional development and want in-service credit on the, as part of the process, that we see the in-service credit is, how are they going to share that? Are they going to share what they learned with their department? And then there's a checkoff list on the back of that, which is also run through the Professional Development Committee.
Okay, thank you.
But I agree, and I think working with the principals, the administration this year, it's allowing faculty time, having teachers share best practice for the first 10 minutes of five, you know, I think is really, really important.
Finding other ways to share it, too, so having a module, or just having someone even have access to the PowerPoint, I think, could be really helpful if they can't go.
Really a Google district, so there's a lot of teachers that share a lot of the information through Google Drive, especially a lot of the curriculum work that's been going on, and so.
Great, thank you.
Any further discussion? All right. Thank you very much, Sean.
Good luck. Good success.
All right, we're ready for a little business call? Is that right?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so an update on the superintendent search. School committee met in, in June, in a workshop-style format, where we discussed steps that we're going to take for the identification of our next permanent superintendent. We had, it was very, very well attended by the public, and also by so many of the teachers. I see a couple of teachers here tonight, thank you for coming. But it was very well attended by the public and teachers, and we had wonderful feedback throughout the meeting. We, there were a couple of things we did. We considered whether or not to use a search firm, and we did unanimously agree that we should contract with a search firm for this. I think the market is, is very different than it was four years ago, so with all the openings that we have in the state this year, at the present. So we sent out, and with Ken's help, we sent out an RFP to a number of firms. Ken did a little bit of research on firms that are active here in Massachusetts. We got responses from all but one. One of the firms actually was not able to take on any new projects, which I, I think also gives us a little idea of what the, what we're facing as far as the market. So we have those proposals at this point. Tonight, we'd like to form a subcommittee of two to three school committee members, who will go through these proposals, do approves and cons, analyze the differences, and come back to the full committee with a recommendation on which one we may, we may want to engage. That being said, I know, Julie, you wanted to talk a little bit about this before we go to the point where we...
Yeah, I, I just wanted to kind of comment a little bit. I was unable to be at the meeting in June. Four years ago, I happened to serve the school committee in the capacity of, I was sort of the point person for the superintendent search that we conducted then. So actually, even before seeing these minutes, I had reviewed the recording of that meeting. And I, I just got to be honest, there were a couple of things that made me scratch my head a little bit, because it was not as, what was reported was not exactly how I remembered the process. So as we're beginning a new search, I thought it might be helpful if we kind of refresh our memories a little bit, and talk about, certainly this first point, how did we go about selecting a search committee? We did use a search committee four years ago.
Search firm or a search committee?
A search firm, thank you very much for the, for the correction. A search firm. At the time, we did choose MAS-C, but there was a process that we went through before we made that decision, and I can kind of reflect for everybody what we had done. At the time, we had a subcommittee of three members of the school committee. It happened to be myself, Mr. Mullis, and a former member, Leslie Quick. We went through a similar process of putting out a request for proposals. We got three in response. The three that we looked at was NESDEC, MAS-C, and it was Feature Management Systems. So two of the same that we're looking at again this time. The three of us in that subcommittee reviewed those three proposals. I actually happened to put together analysis. I don't know if this would be helpful to review it. It is old information. I think, Mrs. Bryson, you had asked for a copy of it, so I have one for you.
Thank you.
And we did share this publicly at a meeting four years ago. I can even give you the date of the meeting, if you'd like, but we did decide to, the subcommittee decided to recommend MAS-C, and then we voted on it in public. It was around November, right before Thanksgiving of 2013, so quite a while ago. I know there was a discussion about previous fees four years ago, again, four years ago, so that this is not going to be exactly applicable to our time framing. I think we, somebody had reported out that we thought the high fee was 25,000. At the time, it was actually a little bit lower than that, but just, just, I share that as an FYI. And I know, Mrs. Bryson, you had asked, or were cautioning over using a headhunter versus a search committee? And I know, Mrs. Bryson, you had asked or were cautioning over using a headhunter versus a search committee.
Well, using a, I keep using one of the same.
Using a firm that would be seen as more of a, not necessarily a headhunter, but yes, recruiting, but also not necessarily just trying to pull in people that they... They knew.
Right.
Within their network.
To stay away from sort of this inside piece a little bit.
Right, okay, and I think using the word headhunter versus a search firm, I've been in the recruiting business a long time, we're really one in the same. I think it's the level of services that are provided back then and also just taking an initial look at the four proposals we've received, understanding what this employment market is like today. You've already referred that it's a lot different than it was four years ago. If we are going to pay a fee for service, I would expect a real in-depth search. I'd be looking for a firm that be able to directly source candidates. So go into those districts that have a superstar superintendent and entice them out to be one of our candidates. I don't want somebody who's just going to look at the pool of people that are in their network and, you know, send out the postcards to the same 50 people that have already been sent postcards to. So that's just a thought on the selection of a search firm.
And I appreciate this input because, as you mentioned, it was four years ago. There are three people on this committee, myself included, who were not, not part of that, so I appreciate this.
No, and I think, you know, another point, I think it was you that said, Mr. Mullis, that, you know, yes, it would be very helpful to have a search firm, but I don't want this committee to forget. All of us need to take place and take a step and involved, be involved and give their time. This took a tremendous amount of time last year, I, four years ago, I expected to take a tremendous amount of time. This time, we all have to commit to being involved in the process. You can't just rely on one or two people.
Agreed.
In saying that, I think that's something that we need to revisit in our discussion is, just generally speaking with the proposals we have received, they're all, they all pretty much have so much services. Granted, I think they have, some have higher levels of service in the areas of which you've just spoken to. But I think we also need to factor in the discussion, which is something that I hope the subcommittee can also kind of keep in mind and kind of work into the discussion of weighing out the proposed firms is, do we look outside of Massachusetts? And if so, what is that going to look like financially for us? Especially as we examine candidates and/or interview candidates? You know, what are our needs in that interview process? Like to, you know, I'd like to keep costs down, but be, you know, but be smart with how we spend our budget for the search. So that's something that I would be interested in, just preliminary thoughts at this stage.
I personally, in that respect, I would think that the search firm we engaged would be able to advise us as far as what the pool of candidates is going to look like and whether, whether we have to go outside of, never mind the state, whether we have to look outside of New England.
But what is that going to look like? I think that's something that I think we do need to consider and I, I do think that is a question to pose to whatever firm we choose, we choose to go with. But we also have to be cognizant in making that decision, the financial implications, what can we or can't we live with? Because we're not going to be able to, if someone's coming across country or even Midwest or something in that realm, we have to think about, we're not going to have a lot to examine, you know, other than the person. And I'm just somebody who likes to see the big picture because I think it speaks to, speaks to an individual, you know what I mean? And those who work under them. When you're able to kind of really meet and speak face-to-face with people. So is Skype going to be sufficient enough, you know, if that's an option? So that's just some of the pros and cons I've been weighing and just looking what our needs are, you know. But I have to say that, you know, we're in a small pond and just don't want to get the same candidate circling through. It's the other, you know, piece.
Steve?
Tom? I mean, I thought when our first round of looking for candidates, we got the 47 resumes that we weren't really considering outside of, you know, the New England area that we were kind of shying away from, you know, I think we got people from like Texas and California or Seattle and places like that, that, you know, we wanted to try to keep it more local, more like within the, from the New England area.
I don't, and forgive me if I'm mistaken, my memory doesn't serve, but I don't recall seeing resumes outside of this area that we were all that enamored with.
Oh, we weren't, but I'm saying I thought that was one of the kind of things that was like, oh, they're, you know, from Seattle.
I personally, I would like to make sure we're not penny wise and pound foolish. I want to make sure that if we find a superstar that's some distance away, I think we need to figure out whether this, this person's the real deal and whether we want to invest in, in seeing more of this person. So I, but I think it's awful early to, to be discussing that, that part of it.
I just have a question for Julie. You talked about the minutes, what specifically bothered you in the minutes? I'm just a little confused of what was...
Questions, there are a few things that my memory of what happened and then what was reported out wasn't quite the same. So I went back and looked. So I, there's a couple of points that I just, I just want clarification, that's all, because I wasn't able to be present.
Which ones? Because I know I had some, some conversation during that meeting that we're going back and forth whether we had a subcommittee or didn't have a subcommittee and some of the people in the crowd said we shouldn't have a subcommittee and...
So I think, I think right now, if we can just, just for organizational purposes, right now we're talking about a search firm. I have other points that I'll make as I, as we go through and as our, our discussions progress. But I think right now, just for organizational purposes, we need to decide how are we going to deal with the proposals we've received and what process, what steps we're going to take from here on that piece.
So is that something we would talk at subcommittee? Is that something you want to talk in the open? Which direction are we heading on that?
You had suggested that, the idea of having a subcommittee just to review the proposals and then make a recommendation to the full committee. Is that up for discussion at this point?
Well, if, if you want to go, at this point, we're discussing, I think, under the agenda item, it's the superintendent's search update. So feel free to, to finish your, your points and then we can, we can move on and form that subcommittee.
We might be here all night, we might not want to do that. So let's, let's, let's deal with one separate topic at a time.
So at this point, I'm looking for individuals, individuals who will volunteer for the subcommittee. And Julie has expressed an interest and because, and I did ask her because she was the point person the first time around, the last time around. So I'd be looking for at least one or two other people who, Jen, you have some interest, great. Anybody else able to put in the time, have the interest?
I, if no one else wants to do it, I mean, I was part of it last time, I'd be happy to.
Okay. All right, so that's three, so that's as far as we can go. So that's great. So Tristan, we're going to form a subcommittee to review the search firm proposals made up of Julie Broussard, Jen Bryson, Manny Mullis. Thank you.
Can I make a recommendation?
Sure.
Do you think this would be the appropriate juncture to just hear people's, the boards, take as to what they'd like to see encompass? You know, what they feel, what our needs, you know, what they feel our perspective as to what our needs are in looking for a firm, what they ideally would like? If anybody has that to offer so that the committee in reviewing the proposals can take their own opinions into account as well as the board and kind of...
Fire away.
I think I just did previously, you know.
All right, so...
So, but I just, I just wanted to open that up for discussion for other members of, you know, if anybody had any additional...
All right, Peggy has already mentioned that she's going to pretty much abstain from this entire process because of her, what could be perceived as a conflict. Tom, do you have any, anything in particular you want to add?
The only thing that I saw in there that kind of concerned me was the, I'd like to kind of use a company that's more local than, you know, across the country or, you know, a little south of here. Just for, because I think the cost would get up pretty, pretty high pretty quickly with the, I said, the travel and this and that and consulting fees and things like that. So that'd be the only concern that I have is that we maybe stick with somebody that's within Massachusetts at least.
Or within New England, maybe?
New England, yeah, New England.
Well said. Well, you're on the committee, you guys are on the committee. I won't add anything to your, I think you guys will have it covered. MJ's made her, made her voice heard?
Yeah, I have to agree with Tom. I think we, I think it may serve us well not to go with an à la carte type of service. If, if I read, you know, some of the proposals that I reviewed correctly, I just want to make, want to know what the bottom line is. I know there's fluctuation, fluctuation with regards to advertisements and things of that sort. But I like to, I'm somebody who needs the bottom line, you know, without too much not included, you know what I mean? Minimal additions.
And the only, actually, the only thing, my only thought as I was reviewing this was, one firm in particular listed the searches that they've done recently and even were, was so good as to provide phone numbers and contact names for school committee members that were involved. I think it would be, be real nice to, if we have, were able to do this due diligence, talk to some of the communities that they've done searches for in the past. All right, and, and hopefully we'll be able to get this done and report back with a recommendation at our next regularly scheduled meeting, September 13th. Does that sound reasonable?
It's not doable, it's fine for me.
Yeah? Okay, beautiful.
Great.
All right. All right, Paul, I want you to lead us in new business.
Thank you. As we had discussed, I'd like to bring on an interim Director of Administration of Finance.
Can I interrupt for one second? We're losing some of our audience. Did you guys want to comment on the superintendent's search?
No, we're just here for the voice call.
Oh, of cour-, I'm sorry, okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
It's a pleasure.
Thank you.
So I'd like to appoint as a motion that I think you agreed ultimately, right? But, Mr. Frank Antonelli as the interim Director of Administration of Finance. Mr. Antonelli was unable to come tonight, he had a previous engagement. But he actually started in Wilmington many, many, many years ago. And it seems like a lot of businessmen just started in Wilmington and then moved on. But he retired, I believe, from Bill Richter and he's been in interim since then. He was in interim in Lowell, he was in interim in Chelsea, I'm sorry, in Chelmsford and most recently in Groton Dunstable. So he comes with very high recommendations from people who have worked with him. And I think he'd be a great addition to, to help through the, the rest of this school year anyway. And he would, we're looking for him to work, you know, around three days a week. Some weeks might be more, some weeks might be less, depending what's going on, but...
And I actually had the, the pleasure to meet him the other day, he's a terrific guy. And he actually pointed to a chair in his office and said, yeah, I purchased that back in 1980-something. And it still looked pretty good, but I said, look out the window at the building behind us and Paul purchased that. But he seems like a great guy and I'm sure he'll do a good job. I will be looking for a motion to ratify? Yes, MJ?
I'd make a motion to appoint Frank Antonelli as the interim Director of Administration of Finance through June 30th, 2018.
Thank you, do I have a second? Tom, all those in favor? All right, that looks like five in favor, one abstention, or are you, are you voting against? I should...
No, I'm abstaining.
Abstain.
Thank you. Okay, if I can go on. We have in the audience here Doreen Crowe, our nurse leader, and Dr. Mark Curdo. Last year, we, we had a new school physician, Dr. Maddox. And I think Doreen, maybe when she brought him here in front of you, might have alluded to that he might have to move on. He worked with us for one year, but his practice was such and he was already a school physician in another district prior to starting in Wilmington, so he moved on. So Doreen did some research and so forth and we have Dr. Curdo to be our school physician for the, the next three years, hopefully. So be here if you have any questions, but I'd like to appoint him as our school physician.
Welcome, Dr. Curdo.
Thank you.
Committee members, any questions for Dr. Curdo?
Dr. Curdo, where is your practice?
My practice is in Reddick, I'm with Downed Pediatrics.
What the railroad tracks are?
They're where the railroad tracks are. And you do have four children in the Wilmington Public Schools, is that...
I do, they're in 11th grade, 10th grade, and my twins are in 8th grade.
I have to say, I'm very excited to hear that you'll be joining our district this year as our school physician. And I thank you because I know you do have a very busy practice and I know what that looks like. I work in adult medicine, but I really thank you for stepping up and being our physician for the district. We're very fortunate to have you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I would just like to, you know, agree with that. He's been my son's doctor since he was an infant and, and he's done a great job.
It's wonderful to hear. And I certainly would echo those comments. I want to thank you for, for joining Wilmington. Perhaps I should, that welcoming should wait till after the vote, I suppose. Do I have a motion? From Tom, seconded by MJ, all those in favor? And now officially, welcome. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Next item in the agenda is the athletic summer camps. I would normally turn this over to the Director of Administration of Finance, but since we don't have one yet, it'll turn over to me.
Hold on, hold on.
In front of you, you have a report for the summer camps, the athletic summer camps we ran this past summer. As I mentioned, this is our ninth year of running the camps. We had about, almost 500 children participated, bringing in a little over $82,000 in revenue and a little over $44,000 in net profit. Had about 15 more participants than the prior year in what I've shown you also is our revenue expenses, profit and participants since we started in 2009. So it's a great program, I think that the kids love it. The coaches, the staff do a great job. It's, it's a fun six or seven weeks in the summer that they, they run these camps and there's 11 of them, so. We had to, always was at the high school, we were building the new high school, we moved it to the middle school. We had some questions on any work that might be done at the high school this year, so we moved it to the middle school again. But hopefully, we'll bring it back to the high school, so we'll continue going, so.
I appreciate this breakdown, this is, I mean, it's every year, we're doing, we're doing better and better and more and more participation. Yes, Manny?
I just wanted to say that 53% profit is incredible.
Not bad.
So just looking at the revenue growth and the expenses basically dropped. So this is a great program. We, I don't know how we can continue growing it, but it is...
I'll have to take a little different spin if it goes the other way.
Yeah, it is, it is a really good program and it looks like it's being run very, very well, so congratulations on that.
Athletic director, Tim Albers.
Yeah, they've done a great job.
And Ed Harrison prior to that, so it's, it's very popular, it's a really good program.
Any further, any further discussion, questions? Thank you, Paul. All right, do you want, do you want me to introduce this next item or do you want to do it? Sure. We had a parent who had contacted the school committee looking to discuss the possibility or potential of installing security cameras to the outside of school buildings. There was an incident that she had witnessed at the Shawshine and she felt that security cameras might have deterred this, this particular incident. It wasn't a vandalism, it was just, it was somebody, a young person doing something they probably shouldn't have been doing. And unfortunately, she was hoping to be here tonight, she was not able to be here tonight. However... here tonight, she was not able to be here tonight, however, I think it's, uh, I'd like to keep it on the agenda and, uh, and discuss it certainly internally, um, and I know, Julie, I think you, did you have some...
Yeah, I was, I was just gonna say, um, I, I was the one who originally spoke to the community member, um, and I, I certainly sympathized with, with the, what she had seen and, and her concerns, I think they are valid. Um, I did explain that this is not just a topic or a decision that the school committee would make by ourselves, there are multiple stakeholders that would need to share their input, um, certainly the town side, fire chief, chief of police, police department would be involved, um, being that it's security cameras, you don't necessarily wanna talk publicly about the, where you're going to put them, um, that's part of the security issue, um, but I did just, just kinda wanted to see what else was out there, I did a little bit of research, there are other municipalities in the state of Massachusetts that have both internal cameras and cameras on the outside of their buildings. I took a look at what our current policy said, 'cause I wanted to refresh my memory, uh, and we actually do have a, a point in our current policy that we adopted in two thousand and thirteen, security cameras may be placed at various locations at each school, including the main entrance, other entrance and exit location, parking areas, and field areas, so we do have it as part of our current policy now that we could do it. Um, I also reached out to MASC for, um, some suggestions on what other school districts are doing and what their policy looks like, so I pulled a copy of their sample policy that I can share with all of you, just as an FYI, um, I did explain to this community individual that we would obviously not make a decision tonight, it's a, a bigger topic that would need a lot more, uh, research and exploration, but I think it's worth it just to kinda see where we're all at, and just to start thinking about it. I also can share a copy of our current policy if you wanna refresh your memories on those.
And I understand that, I'm sorry, any before I go on? Yes, MJ?
I, I just have to, I too, I was able to find the sample policy at MC, uh, M?
MASC.
MASC, um, I have to say, I think, having them, I think it is a good discussion to start, because if it offers a layer of security for our schools and keeping our staff and our students safe during the school day, um, I think if, if they can add a layer of that, that would be a great advantage. I just wanna ensure that, that would be where I, that would be my perspective as where I stood regarding this topic, as opposed to, um, how do I say this? I say this cautiously, and I don't, um, try to be politically correct, but it's not, they're not to parent, um, and they're not to dissuade behaviors, um, it's to prevent, it's, it's safety, vandalism, um, property that, um, I think it's written in the, in the policy as well, that we have financial stake in our buildings, our grounds, our playgrounds. On that note, I would very much be interested in continuing that conversation, but I know, as you had said, that it's not just a simple conversation or a simple decision, that there are factors like police who are monitoring, there's personnel questions, there's a whole barrage of things, which I started writing down, and, um, and I think that's just the point that I'd like to just make, um, initially on this topic.
And I know that Paul had, uh, because the, it is the town, actually, that, uh, maintains our, our school buildings and would be, uh, responsible for installation and so forth, Paul did contact, um, town manager and brought this, broached the subject, and got some feedback from him?
Yes, I, I did reach out to, uh, town manager and, and just to talk a little bit, and, um, i- it's bigger than just the schools, I mean, it's, it's a school-town project, if we even decide to go that route, um, you know, there's, you know, there's, there's a cost component, there's a monitoring component, there's a big brother component, there's, we ha, we have security in our buildings, we have card readers, badges to get in, uh, the high school does have some cameras outside, but that was part of the project, um, we have cameras when people rent, if a visitor's coming to the building, they get buzzed in, we, we see them, so we do have security. We don't have cameras outside on all the other schools, other than really the, um, the high school, you know, there's a wiring infrastructure issue, there's resolution, what are we trying to protect, 'cause we don't have a lot of, and, and I would be one of the first to find out, a lot of vandalism of the schools, there might be issues on the, as an example, the skate park, or the, the playgrounds, or whatever, and, uh, the cameras on a school building able to see that far, how is the resolution and so forth, and who's gonna monitor that, because a lot of that stuff happens outside of school hours. So, it, it's a bigger discussion, and I think, you know, again, I, I did speak to the town, they're looking into some things, trying to get some estimates of potential costs, and then talking to the chief, and we'll continue the conversation, but, um, yeah, I think that there's a cost benefit as well that, you know, 'cause this could be fairly expensive, depending on if the town even decided to go, and then what is the vandalism, what does it really, does it stop the misbehavior, which it may or it may not, even cameras we have inside some of the schools that, you know, look down the hallways to see who goes into bathrooms, doesn't necessarily always stop the misbehavior, um, so that there's a, there's a lot more discussion that needs to occur, I think, and, and we need to work with the town and talk with the town on this as well.
Yes.
Well, we also had that car chase that ended in the parking lot at Shawsheen last year, you, some outside security in that, no, and I know that, that schools were alerted and were locked down at that point, which is great, I think that's where my interest in that discussion, again, would lie. Can I ask you, it would, do you know, especially with the facilities master plan currently still in the process, would that be something that would typically be, um, added into a proposal of a new building structure? Because that's another thing to consider with the age of our school buildings, um, to invest that type of money only for it to be, the school to be raised in ten years, or, um, that, that's, I, I guess, a question, it's a hypothetical question, I guess, at best, at this stage, but would that be something that going forth, that would, you know, as we, down the road, um, we would factor into any proposals of school building?
Yeah, I would assume that if, if the town wanted to go in that direction, is, is your old way back, um, the preferred option for the, um, facility master plan was to have, um, essentially keep the Shawsheen, Woburn Street, um, north and, and west, expand them and so forth, so that it'd be a building project, so if the decision as part of that was to add cameras outside, that's fine, um, and I think it could be part of those proposals ultimately, if we wanted to go that, that route. The other thing is, you know, a camera on a building may not have the capability of monitoring something that's a hundred yards away, you know, so is it a different structure that's out there, if that's what is decided to, to monitor, and I just use the skate park as an example, you know, something on the building may not be able to, you know, reach that far, or whatever camera could would be cost prohibitive, you know, so it's just some other type of structure and so forth and infrastructure, but, yeah, I suppose that when it comes to that, when the town's ready to pull the trigger on any of those projects, uh, 'cause they are additions on them and so forth, um, that could certainly be looked at to add, that, 'cause it's part of the high school project we had.
I think we'd be of some interest in that stage, whenever they get to that point, that piece.
Tom?
My question is, is why would you do it to the high school if you're not gonna do it to the other schools?
High school is a brand-new project, so it was just part of the whole building project, and I think we have...
What I'm saying is, if you're, you're talking about doing these, you know, the, the capital improvement plan with, you know, redoing the Shawsheen and doing that, now, you know, you're gonna be building, you know, tearing down walls, and you can add the wiring infra, infrastructure, and you can get wireless cameras, um, that can definitely go a hundred yards, if not further, um, I'm just wondering why we, we do it here, but we don't, we wouldn't consider doing it at all the schools, I mean, I think, in today's world, I think more cameras the better, I mean, with different things going on, I know that everybody's worried about big brother, but I think for the safety of our, our kids, or, you know, if, if, if something were to happen out in one of the parking lots, I mean, I, I was surprised nobody's, no kid's gotten hit in, behind Shawsheen after a day of soccer, with the way they run around and cars are in and out and this and that, and I think it would be, you know, would be such a bad idea to have these cameras there, I mean, I don't know about the skateboard park and, you know, but if it can deter them, 'cause I, I've had to speak to a few kids over there, um, that, you know, language was a little bit much, and there was a bunch of, you know, smaller children around, and, uh, you know, but if it would deter them from, you know, doing something, then why not?
I mean, I'm not saying yes or no either way, I'm just saying that it's bigger than just the school system.
I, actually, what I, I thought you were saying is, it would if we did it during that, the renovations, it would be mu, far more cost-effective.
Oh, yeah. But, I mean, today, I, I'm not gonna, you know, I, I, we don't have the funds to do it if the school department took it on, that's why I think it's a community kinda decision and, uh, what we wanna, wanna do, and then, you know, even, you know, the, the soccer fields, I mean, we have the schools, and, and I understand that, the kids running in and out, but, um, I'm not sure, but it, it's, I just, you know, I think it's, it's bigger than the, the schools making the decision, uh, to do that.
MJ?
I, I think though, too, as this conversation develops, um, in, whenever the process arises, that we wanna, I wanna ensure that these cameras don't offer a false sense of security, but with these cameras, there's also a liability that will, that will fall on whomever, you know, it's up to the superintendent when it comes to the schools to have protocols, protocols and processes in place for things of that nature, and there, there's already those processes in for those in-school cameras, but, again, I just, I think it's a, a great idea if it allows another layer, um, but I also wanna ensure that it's not a false sense of security, that for whatever limitations a camera has, it's not going to protect some, you know, somebody from making wrong choices, you know, wrong choices.
Yeah.
Because I think there's a layer of responsibility that everyone needs to own, they need to own their choices.
And we'll continue the conversation with the town.
Anything else? All right, so I would suggest that we, uh, we table this for the time being, you've, uh, there's some research that's coming, and we can, uh, perhaps invite our community member to the next meeting, do you think she'd be interested in attending?
Oh, I'm, I'm sure she would, I can certainly let her to the...
Yeah, I think we might wanna wait till we get any other information from the town, so...
And ideally, we could, we've already answered that, so we may have that for the next meeting?
Yeah, we may or may not, I mean, I don't know, but, yeah, so, I'll let you know.
So we'll table it until we have that info?
Yeah, I think that's the best way to go.
Okay. All right, that, uh, that concludes our, um, scheduled business, uh, open up for public comment, if anybody has any comments regarding anything on the agenda? Nope, not a one, that's okay. Other reports, anybody, um, have anything that they wanna say that was, uh, we were not able to get on, into the agenda on time? Nope, no subcommittee? Yes, Peggy?
I had asked you about that with the selectmen, can you explain that to me? That, that we're able to use that? I don't understand.
So, the, actually, it's funny that you say that, and this is the first time I've worded it that way, but, um, the, the selectmen are utilizing a, um, an opportunity for members to speak about something that was not reasonably foreseen at the time the agenda was created. So if there's anything that's come up the last couple of days, or anything about the schools, or anything in particular you just wanna say, like, for instance, I'll just say, I was, um, fortunate enough to attend the opening day, it was fantastic, the energy level of the teachers coming back, uh, was, was just, was wonderful, and, uh, Paul, I thought you did a great job, uh, opening it, um, and, uh, I would just say that my kids had a great first day and a great second day, so... Anybody? Yes, Peggy?
Okay, then I might as well bring up, um, supposedly something's going on at the middle school about, um, changing for the girls, and it must be the boys, too, changing to go to, um, FISED during FISED, and I thought it might have been mentioned in the, in, um, the superintendent report, but because they're going wild about this...
We have, yeah, I think that several of us have heard from community members about this, and I think we're, we're trying to research exactly what's going on, we've heard from Kevin, uh, there's a couple, Kevin, the principal at the middle school, and there are a couple of things that I've heard that I've, that I'm curious about, but I think we're still gathering evidence, uh, on that, to figure out what's going on.
Okay. Thank you.
Any else? All right. So, uh...
Excuse me, Steve, any note what's going on? Are you gonna send us a message about it, or are we gonna wait till the next meeting?
Actually, I'm, yeah, no, we'll send a message for sure.
Okay.
And I think that, uh, I think a message to the middle school parents is probably in order as well.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Kevin is planning on sending something out at the end of the week, so I'll, I'll follow up with him, but, yeah, it, it's, um, there's...
I agree, I'm on the side of it, it's, it's...
There's, there's usually more to what's going on, so, but we'll, we'll, we're still looking at it.
Okay.
Yes, Jen?
We talked a lot at the end of last year about homework, and I was just wondering where we, if there was a subcommittee on that, what if Mr. Gallagher was, so I just, I've heard a couple of community members have reached out, just asking what was happening, and I didn't see it on the agenda.
Yeah.
So I was just curious if there was any kind of an update.
Yeah, we're putting together, um, a little committee to start to review our policies, um, we have a couple of parents, um, that are interested, and, uh, we met with some teachers at each grade level, so, once we formulate that committee, we'll send out the potential dates to meet, so, within the next few days, we should be good to go.
All right, thank you. Anything else? All right, important dates, our next, uh, school committee meeting will be September 13th, and after that will be September 27th, and, uh, yes, Peggy?
For the agenda, I'd like to request that we have an update on negotiations in executive session at the next meeting.
Will do.
Thank you. MJ, Steve, MJ?
MJ, thank you, Peggy.
We have correspondence tonight.
Oh, that, yeah, I skipped right over that, didn't I?
That's okay, I wouldn't let you forget it.
[laughing]
Um, we received a beautiful thank you card, uh, from the wellness, um, team, uh, it reads, "Dear Wilmington School Committee, the staff and students would like to thank you for supporting the walking school bus wellness activity. We had a wonderful time walking together to school, best the Woburn Street School Wellness Team and the Woburn Street School Bus Number Seventeen Students." So as you recall, Mrs. Dickinson tried a, a new pilot, which I think was hugely successful, and, um, and I'm hoping to see this continue, and I'm looking forward to, um, hearing, hearing it continue in, uh, this year's Wellness Advisory Council meeting, so, uh, we, Doreen Crowe here, so, I enjoy the committee so much, I have to tell you. Thank you.
Absolutely. All right. I would entertain one final motion.
Still moved.
All right, motion for adjournment?
Motion for adjournment.
Do I have a second? MJ, all those in favor? Thank you. Thank you for attending.